Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Let's follow the Ellis Falls Union High School, school district, school board meeting. To order any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Me neither. Review and approve board minutes from June 8th. Anybody see any errors in those? I didn't see anything.
Molly. Yes? Molly, excuse me, can you hear me? I joined late. My computer's not working. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Molly, I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes of June 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Colin. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the board minutes of June 8th, 2020 meeting. All those in favor, I'm gonna call out your name. I've got Deb Wright.
Aye.
Thank you. Jack Brier.
Aye.
Margot.
Aye.
Priscilla.
Aye.
Stephen Fine.
I'll have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Thank you. Colin James.
Aye.
Jason Terry.
He's not on the board.
Oh, okay. I saw him on the list. Thank you. I knew that. Uh, motion has been made, seconded, and it passes. Communication and public comments. Um, I'm trying to look here. Chris, do we have any public here that wants to speak?
Um, let me just check the chat.
Yeah.
Jason Terry's, oh, Molly, Jason Terry is raising his hand.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Jason.
Jason Terry. You're up, Jason.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Great.
So, uh, I come to you as a parent today, not a board member from Rocky Ham. So, um, just like to read this to you and, uh, bear with me for a second. I was told recently that sports are a non-scholastic activity. In Vermont, we do not have professional teams. The high school, sports, theater, band, all extracurricular activities are very important. I would argue many life lessons are taught in the classroom of the practice field. In fact, I would even debate most life lessons are learned in the classroom of competition. Sports and extracurricular activities are not about the sport. They are about the life lessons, hard work, creating a bond, learning how to work as a team. We are Vermonters and we are Americans. We have an opportunity to be better than everyone else and not just follow, but lead. I'd like to discuss sports in relation to upcoming school year and also include alternative planning if sports are canceled for all upperclassmen. I was told they will be evaluating baseball and then go forward as and then go new, I'm sorry, I was told they'd be evaluating baseball. And so far, nothing, and they don't have nothing to look back to as a guide as to like, uh, how to, uh, how to lead them. So this is all new for everyone, obviously. So far, three weeks into baseball, there's been no issues. Baseball is a dirty sport, played in dirt. And yet we have guys, individuals volunteering, wiping down baseball bats, sanitizing them, sanitizing helmets, and doing all sorts of things just to keep the sport going. My question is, what is going to be the threshold of pain? Eventually may get sick. We need to have good management of the procedures that are set in place. What are we going to allow to be acceptable, someone getting sick or someone not getting sick? We're not going to be able to stop everything. We're gonna have to have good management in place for these procedures. How is COVID less scary for the soccer or field hockey than basketball or football? If you're not, if you're that scared of COVID for football or basketball, then you should be scared to open a school at all. And we should close the doors, just like many businesses have, and employees have not been paid. Maybe that should happen for everyone who is getting currently paid salary from the Ellis Falls Union High School. Thank you.
You're muted, Molly.
Thank you. Chris, do you see anybody else? I don't see anybody else.
I do not see anyone, Molly.
Okay. So let's, we don't have any policies, correct?
Correct.
Uh, reports, we're down to superintendent and central office staff.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll start off with just a general report in regards to, uh, I think the most important thing is, um, the reopening task forces that we have in place and give you an update on what we've been doing. We had our first meeting on the 9th of July of that task force. And, um, we have over 40 people and I believe five different subcategories um, for planning for the reopening of school. What I am gonna do is I am gonna call up, just to share with everybody. Molly, you can see my screen? So what you're looking at right here are all the different members of the task force and how we have broken them out. Um, we based it on socially emotional, food services, health screening, facilities and sanitation, transportation, academics, extracurriculars, and recess. So this gives you a really good idea of how many people are involved in the planning and the reopening of the school. We had our first meeting, like I said, on the 9th. It lasted about two hours long. It was really an opportunity for everyone on board to share their concerns and offer some ideas on what we need to be looking at. Um, I think it was very productive, but the real work starts now when we're in with the subcommittees. Um, these subcommittees, um, I've required these subcommittees to meet sometime during this week. And based on what's gonna happen is that they're gonna look at all the different areas. I'll up another slide. Bear with me for a second. So we'll be looking at, um, all the different areas pretty much based on the SU reentry plan that I created a few weeks ago. I'm just getting to my shared drive so people can see it. So what we're, you know, what we're trying to do is, um, these are all the different areas that if it falls into your subcategory, we wanna look, we, we have the screening disinfecting, just like we just went over. But these are a lot of the different areas that we have to come up with a plan for in order to reopen the schools. We have buses. We have bus stops in there, visitors. Classroom, what it's gonna look like in classrooms right now, we're coming up with, we need to come up with a plan to make sure that we can accommodate all the students in the buildings based on facing everyone six feet apart. And so at our meeting today with my administrative team, the first step, what they're doing is they're looking at the overall student population and the square footage of each classroom and extra building spaces that they'll be using. First, to see if we can even accommodate all our students when we put them at six feet space in the classroom. So that's something that the administrators have already started looking at. So in addition to, we also gotta look at food services, buildings, drop offs and pickups, and then overall student pre-K issues that we have to look at, and then group gatherings, recess, and all employees. So that list right there just gives you a good idea of the work that's already gone into the planning. Um, you know, like I said, by the end of this week, all the subcommittees should have met and there should be, uh, the work that they did in those subcommittees as an administrative team, we'll compile it, review it, and go over it. Once we have all that information compiled, that information will be then distributed back to all the administration and the schools, and then the school task force will get the job working on what the plan looks like for each individual district and school. Um, so that's where we are right now currently with the reopening plan. We're hoping to have this all, um, out and done and distributed to people the first or second week in August. I know people really wanna know what the plan is right now, but it's not something that we can rush. And we have a lot of people working on it and we wanna do it right the first time. But even after this plan is rolled out, it's something that my administrative team will be working on and reviewing once a week to see where, if there's any gaps in what we, um, have created and to be going in regards to continue working on it because we know we're not gonna catch everything the first time as much as we can. There's gonna be a lot of unexpected things out there. So that's where we are right now in regards to the reentry plan, um, for opening up schools in the fall. We've got a lot of categories to cover. We've got a lot of things to come up with. But, um, we have, as you can see, we have a lot of people involved. And at the end of this week, we should have a lot of work done, so the following week, the schools can start working on their plans.
Thank you, Chris. So I think you've covered district updates and reopening of schools.
Molly, I think, uh, is that Colin? I can't tell. That, uh, had his hand raised.
Colin?
Yeah, if I may just real quick, um, it was a very educational piece this week for the, the meeting. Um, I just wanted to update, you know, Molly and everybody else, and I'm sure, you know, Chris has communicated with Molly. But, um, you know, this isn't over. You know, we all know that it, this is a very, this is a challenge for all of us that are on this committee and I'm looking forward to the process. But, uh, um, it was very educational, um, and, uh, moving forward, you know, it will be a challenge. But, uh, we're gonna do the best we can. And I wanna thank Chris Pratt and, you know, his team for really putting this together. And every day changes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Molly, I do. Um, so Chris, um, well, one, I wanna thank everyone who's on these different committees. I know this is a huge task and that's something I personally would, you know, it's just, there's no right answer here. And so thank you all for serving on those committees. And Chris, I just wanna make sure, I think you've spoken in the past that, um, you're still, I wanna make sure you're still in communication with other school districts and principals and superintendents. It seems like we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. Like, I know the wheel, like, the car is getting old as we go, but we're not in isolation, you know, every school district's having to do that. So I'm hoping that there's conversation happening throughout as well.
Yeah, I meet with, um, superintendents from, from the southeast, which is like Woodstock. Only in that area, all down. And we meet once a week to keep, to share what the work we've done, um, the different approaches that we're all thinking. Um, so yeah, we, and we also have a conversation, the superintendents, once a week with Dan French. So there are a lot of conversations going on. None of us wanna recreate the wheel as a southern Vermont um, education do things together as much as possible. And for instance, you know, I was able to get the, what it looks like for returning, opening the central office and getting workers back and having things in place. Um, I shared that with all the other superintendents because they're not there yet. So, and they might be further along in some areas than I am. So we're sharing all this work as we go. So we're, we have a good idea what it's gonna look like, not just in our SU, but all the surrounding SUs as well. So yeah, there's a lot of work going on about sharing of ideas.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else got anything for Chris Pratt? Jack?
Just one thing. It's important, uh, for this board and all the boards to understand that this is one of those rare places where boards really do need to stick their necks, their noses in, uh, both because it is effectively policy, the whole policy area we've never touched on before, and it is community centric. These are, uh, the communities that, uh, that are part of this supervised reunion, part of the BFUHS district, have a real stake in the decisions we make here. And I think it's important that, uh, that boards not pull back, but really participate actively in this. I know Jason, uh, has made some statements and I think he, I encouraged him to make them. I think that folks that are concerned that from the healthcare community in our area should be participating, should talk to us, uh, that we should make this sort of a standing item in not only this, this school district, but all the other school districts, because each of us have some unique characteristics. For example, we do more high, we do more varsity sports. We do, we have a different kind of air handling system. We have a lot of rural space that we're at, outdoor classroom instruction, whereas someplace like BF Middle School doesn't. So I think it's important that, uh, boards stay active, that they pass ideas sort of up the food chain to Chris, to, uh, Hudson and Chris Pratt. Uh, because I think that, uh, there's no such thing as a really bad idea. And it's important to make certain that the whole state gets the benefit of not only, uh, the folks at the AOE, but the individual school board across the state.
Thank you. Are we ready for our principal? Looks like we are, Chris.
Um, so two items there, school updates and reopening of schools. Um, as is typically the case on July 13th or thereabout, there's not a lot to update in terms of school. We're, um, on summer break, um, we have, um, some ESY activity happening here at the school. That's, um, some summer school in support of students on IEP, just a limited amount. And we have some, um, remote summer school credit recovery opportunities that are going on for students. That's pretty much it as far as, um, any schooling is going on. Um, reopening of schools, um, as Mr. Pratt mentioned, there is a WNESU task force. There is a BFUHS task force as well. Um, it consists of our coordinators, that is our department heads, and some other, um, added, uh, people with the right kind of, um, expertise and knowledge to participate in that as well. Um, we've actually been meeting since about halfway through the remote learning piece just to start wrapping our heads around what is the summer and what is next year going to look like. We really couldn't make a lot of progress until the, um, the June 17th document, it's a 25-page document, um, on safe and healthy reopening of schools, uh, put out jointly by the AOE and the Department of Health. And so far, that's been the playbook that we've been following. Um, so we had a district level meeting last Thursday. Today, this morning, we had our first BFUHS task force meeting, um, since that document came out and since the, um, WNESU task force. There are many, many to-do items there that, um, not only have to get done, but really have to get figured out before they can get done. And that's what the heavy lifting is for all of this task force work. I'll give you a few highlights of things to anticipate for the fall. Chris mentioned that, um, in order to figure out how we can accommodate students, we have to figure out how well we can fit students into our classrooms. Well, good news, folks, we don't have any walls. So, um, what John Brody and I did about a month ago was we took our master schedule. We took a look at the largest potential classes for any teacher in their teaching areas and also went around with Jim DeBel to figure out how do we safely, six feet apart, get all of the anticipated students into any of these areas? And, uh, long story short, we're very confident that we are gonna be able to have everyone in the building and maintain six-foot distance. Um, and there's gonna be a number of strategies that we apply to that. First of all, if, if the classroom space already works, then it already works. We don't have to do anything to it. Um, in some instances, we'll have to swap out some um, of the preferred furniture, which is in there right now, with some less preferred furniture. Some of you, and Priscilla, you'll be able to relate to this, some of you have, there are these all-in-one seat and desk tablet sort of things, which nobody really likes, but absolutely, um, improves our ability to have working, adequate working spaces for students six feet apart. Um, if by swapping out furniture, we're still a little bit challenged, the next thing we're gonna do is move some walls around to steal some available space. As an example, if you're familiar with the math classrooms, the math classrooms butt up right against the library, that whole set of bookcases that serve as the walls can move as far as we want them to. And so those kinds of, um, adjustments will be made again in order to, um, accommodate that six-foot spacing between desks. If even with moving of walls and changing of furnitures, we're still pressed. Um, another plan of ours is to set up a properly functioning, properly spaced classroom or two in the library. Um, you all are familiar with our library. It's a very large space. So if we need to, we can set that up, or we can have classes in the cafeteria or the, um, auditorium. We won't have to do that very much. Um, so it's not like every block, you're gonna find a class in one of these spaces. Maybe once a block, one of those spaces might be taken up in order to, um, maintain the proper social distancing in the classroom spacing. What our last alternative is, which we are very confident we're gonna be able to avoid, is changing student schedules. In other words, um, reduce a student or two or three in a section of something really large. Um, what I'm telling you is, I am confident we aren't gonna have to do that, which is great because any slight change in a student's schedule has a, has a ripple effect, not just for that student, but in other places as well. So, um, so I feel very good about our ability to do that social distancing piece with the properly accommodated classrooms. Some other things that are pretty much a given at this point, um, although I will always throw out my disclaimer, tomorrow, the AOE may change things on us. So this is valid as of 6:53 on Monday evening. Face coverings for everyone, but in the current guidance, that could be, um, a cloth mask or, um, a face shield. So, um, we're taking a look at both of those options. There will be daily screenings as students either arrive to school or prior to them getting on the bus. Um, the details of that to be worked out in the committee work that Mr. Pratt, right? Um, but, um, certain areas, again, in this guidance will be significantly impacted. On this guidance says that cafeterias and gyms, uh, gymnasiums would, cannot be used for their typical purpose. In other words, we won't be feeding students in the cafeteria, again, unless the guidance changes, which means students will be eating in their classrooms. Um, and so, again, a um, protocol to figure out is what's the best way to make that happen? And I've been meeting frequently with Harley to, to start working on that, that plan. His head will have to be outside. Um, and the good news, as Jack mentioned, is we got a lot of space. Um, and those snowshoes are gonna be getting a workout, um, this winter, I am guessing. And our music classes are gonna be significantly impacted, at least as it's presented in this initial rollout of what we need to do. And I say that because there is a national organization whose acronym escapes me, uh, but Nick Pelton, our band director, continues to let me know that this afternoon was when a study was to be released, um, to flesh out a better understanding of COVID and singing and musical instruments. So as of right now, it's gonna be difficult to pull those off, but, um, we're optimistic that as time progresses to August, we might get a little bit more flexibility in at least those areas, the music. I could go on forever on this, but I'm gonna cut it off there, cuz I, what I really wanna do is give you a flavor for the work that's being done and some of the more certain things that are likely to be a part of this next school year.
Margot?
Thank you, Chris. Um, so I just, well, I wanted, I noticed that, uh, Priscilla had put in a chat a question about the Union High School air handling system and whether it's been checked. And I just wanted to point out to the board and if other board members from other district boards are listening, I had sent, and you all were probably aware of this anyway, but the state of Vermont through the efficiency Vermont has announced a new grant system for schools to look at air handling systems. And, um, I will let one of the Chris's talk about the high school and what our air handling system is. But this is more for other, um, boards that, you know, think about your schools, what are the status of the other school buildings in our district? So just a grant opportunity out there.
Um, so let me speak to that a little bit on behalf of the high school. Um, as many of you know, our, um, air handling system is, um, well, I can't really say almost as new as it could be. That would have been the whole thing turned over last year. But a couple of years ago, we did the second of two phases of a wholesale replacement of our air handling system. The first part of that came in in 2013, and the second part of that was a couple of years ago. And all of that not only is fully up to code, but is, um, firing on all cylinders, you might say. Um, and so if I can give you a little bit more detail, what I did was I took from that document, all of the facilities related things, and I sent them off to Jim DeBel and said, give me some answers on all of these. So I'll give you just a flavor of some of that.
Chris, who's Jim DeBel?
Oh, he's our head custodian.
Okay, thank you.
So with, so I am now reading to you some cut and pasted things from that document. So with regard to ventilation, ventilation in HVAC, follow these recommendations. So the first one is, um, prior to reoccupancy, ensure a school ventilation system is properly cleaned and meets all required operating standards per the manufacturer. Jim's response was done. New filters are on site and will be installed at the beginning of each quarter. Total replacement of four filters, four times per year. Um, I believe the requirement is once per year. We've always done it twice per year, but now we're going to four times per year for the filters. Um, prior to reoccupancy, operate HVAC systems in occupied mode for a minimum of one week, uh, while assuring outside air dampers are open. Jim's response, our system is currently in operation to avoid lapses in airflow. Outside air can be brought into the building thanks to the addition of new air handlers and controls. There are about six more of those bulleted items. I am happy to share all of them with you, but the short version is, um, we're in very good shape with respect to, um, airflow, air handling, and air filtration. But if you wanna, want me to read the rest of those to you, and Jim's responses, I'm happy to do that.
Looks like everybody's happy, Chris.
Okay. Priscilla's got her hand up.
I just wanted to say, Chris, you know, everything that you've told us, it looks like you are, really have done a huge amount of, of work on all of this already, to get us all ready, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, you gotta be out in front of this stuff. Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla. But, uh, you gotta be out in front of this stuff cuz it's gonna be the unexpected things that are gonna take up your time as we get closer to school. So let's knock out the expected things.
Ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, at these meetings, has there been discussion about the powers?
The powers?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, the question is, who's gonna be policing this stuff? Well, the question is, who's going to be policing this stuff? And I guess that's the question, who's going to be policing? Is there any claim by teachers that they should not be doing this stuff? That powers should be doing stuff here?
Sure.
You know, the teachers have said a lot of things about the powers, and I wondered if you were saying that during the course...
I got you. It sounded like you were, use the word powers and, uh, you're saying...
The power of the powers.
Right, right. I'll have to say, Stephen, we haven't gotten to the level, here's where I think that might come up. Um, some of the additional work that is going to need to be done by somebody will involve the, the daily screenings, um, and at the building level, and those on the bus. Um, of all of, of all of the work that needs to be done, um, those are, that's the part right now that stands out to me as we don't have enough people to pull off the way it's described we should do it. So for example, um, we should have not just a bus driver, but somebody else on a bus, and that somebody else doesn't, doesn't exist right now. Um, the bus driver has to drive the bus, but somebody else has to do the screening when they get on the bus. Um, Mr. Pratt, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we do know right away, just to give you a short answer to your question, Mr. Fine, is that we know that we're going to have to have another body on the bus to screen kids before they've gotten on. One of the things that we've looked at is, um, using paraeducators to be health monitors. So, because we can't use the drivers to do that. So each bus would get someone who will do the screening, taking the temperature of the student before they actually get on the bus. So that is part of the plan. Like I said, there's a lot of stuff that's part of the plan. We just have to figure out how we're going to do it.
So right now, we're figuring out the what. We know that there is a who associated with that for most of these whats. Most of the what are we going to do? There are, you know, the teaching, I'm going to buy the teachers, administrators, administrative support people, they're going to do their thing. But also at the building level, what they recommend is multiple entry points. And at each entry point, we would need to do, um, do, um, health checks. So, and, and that is not intended to be the nurse. In fact, their recommendation, the nurse isn't a person doing any of this. The nurse is going to have to kind of oversee the whole process. So we're going to have to figure out who's going to do that. That will probably be a two-person per, um, per entry point. Um, and the other thing that we're supposed to do is figure out a way to stagger arrivals to the school so that, you know, if, if, in regular old, in the, in the world we used to live in, classes started at eight and there was just onslaught of the front door at, you know, 7:55. Um, we've got to find a way to, um, better stagger those arrivals. And as a result, there will be probably, hopefully, some, um, some checks happening anytime between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM. So that's where there's going to be some, some additional labor, um, that will need to be done, and I don't right now know who that would be. So. Okay.
Got you.
Steve, we can't hear you. You getting something else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I can't see anyone. Anyone else have a question for Chris? It looks, Priscilla?
Yeah, are, are your stuff backordered as well, like the others? Or, and what is your prediction for it coming in, like thermometers and, and all of that that's going to be needed?
So, um, I'm not really prepared for kind of like an inventory per se, but I will tell you that in April, we started ordering things. Um, and so we have, um, a thousand masks, you know, with the expectation and the hope that people are going to bring their own. Not that we're going to provide a mask for everybody that comes in the building every day, but we've got a thousand masks. What I charged Jim DeBel with was, um, continually buy stuff so that we get just shy of being accused of hoarding. And so, um, 200 masks this week, 300 masks next week. Um, we have a 12-ounce bottle of hand sanitizer on every teacher's desk and the replacement of that already in the building. Um, and large gallons, I don't know how many, but we've got larger quantities of those. Um, I mean, that's good, that right there is going to be the, the, the difficult thing to measure. I haven't done this yet, but I've got to go online and figure out how many squirts you get out of a 12-ounce bottle so I can then figure out. Because in this plan that, that we're putting together, there is a lot of hand sanitizing going on. Um, from the day, from the moment you, literally from the moment you arrive to school, um, every time you change a class, um, when you start to eat, when you're done eating, I mean, that, there's a list of like 15 times that, I mean, some of it doesn't apply to students, like when the nurse is giving out medication, or if, if, if a teacher has to help toilet a student, you know what I mean? But, but there's, there's going to be a lot of that. That's, that's the one that I, I need to get a little bit more information on. But we also, um, again, use that same process from April to now to buy, um, concentrated, um, disinfecting cleaning materials that, you know, a gallon turns into like, you know, 50 gallons because of the way you cut it. And, um, so I'm going to tell you right now, I feel very good about our supply system, but, uh, no one's ever done this before. So I might feel very good about our supply system and October's going to roll, go around and say, we got to close down because we don't have any more hand sanitizer. I hope not, but who knows? So, but we're going to continue order, and yes, things you're ordering now are on backorder.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Do we have a finance report today?
Um, Jason, Jason.
Go ahead, Jason.
Uh, you're muted.
Sorry, I had a chat in a chat. I didn't know if I was allowed to ask a question. Uh, Mr. Hudson, uh, and Mr. Pratt, I sent you an email about the dishwasher at the high school. I had, uh, I met with Harley, Australian Friday, did a tour of the cafeteria with him. Uh, really good guy, wish to take care of him. But the dishwasher is not working and I offered to call, uh, Hobart and EcoLab to get it fixed because like he said that there might be another one, uh, coming to replace it. But I think sanitation of the dishes is probably pretty important. And also the hood is not working as well, and that would also get some air and, uh, that would help you filter the, uh, it sounds like you definitely need a belt on your hood. So I didn't know if, uh, if you wanted...
Yeah, I'd like to budget, don't we?
Yes, if I, I could speak to that, Molly.
Thank you.
I checked in with both Harley and Jim DeBel based on your concerns, Jason, and, um, yep, we do, the, um, and I didn't have a chance to follow up to get the details on this, but when I talked to Jim either, um, so we've already gone out to bid on that dishwasher. The bids should be coming back this week if they haven't already come back. So we were going to check on the bid opening for that. So, um, we had budgeted for that new dishwasher, um, for this cycle. It will be in place before the, again, assuming that everything in the process plays out the way it's supposed to, it'll be in place before the students arrive. I did talk to, I'm, Harley about your concern, Jason, about the man-hours used to wash the dishes, um, to get the proper sanitization, um, while that, um, piece of equipment isn't properly functioning. It's functioning, but it doesn't properly function for the temperatures that are needed. Um, and, um, while Harley wasn't thrilled about not having the automated system, the folks, here's what I needed to confirm. Things are getting cleaned, the meals are getting prepared, and we're not pinning any overtime in order to pull that off. In other words, it's not ideal, but the job is getting done. And hopefully by the time we have our next board meeting, um, we will be prepared for the board to act on those bids so that before, um, students are back, which is really the big deal, I have to say. I'm not here minimizing the cleaning that's being done now, but, um, we aren't serving meals on trays to students and, you know, so the, the, um, dishwashing load is significantly less right now than it is when we've got a building full of students. So, um, Jason, I appreciate your input on that. Um, but I, I think that, um, because we are so close to getting that replaced, I don't know that it makes sense to have, um, someone come in and work on the one that's there right now. And again, I did have that conversation with Harley and he feels the same.
Thank you, I agree. And I was just concerned about the school year and, and it doesn't really, not really in place until it's in place, if you get what I'm saying, so.
For sure, for sure. You know, I mean, I might be singing a different tune, you know, in late August, but I'm hopeful that all of the parts of the, the system are going to work the way they're supposed to so that, um, we'll have a new dishwasher in here, um, by mid-August.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're ready for finance.
I believe Teresa is here.
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So, uh, what I presented to you so far or tonight is the almost completely finished of Bellas Falls for the financials for FY20. Um, the budget's sitting at probably about 95% spent, basically. The revenues that have been, that I've anticipated, um, let's see, I don't know if the report's going to go up, but, um, the revenues at this point, we've received everything that I know of that we were anticipating. Um, there could be some minor changes on something based on our audit when the auditors come. Um, we're already scheduled for the pre-audit, August 24th for them to come, and then they'll come back like September, October to do the final audit for the financials for the districts. But at this point, there's, there's nothing, there, there's a few things, I shouldn't say nothing, there's just a couple of things that I could probably state that if you're looking at the reports and you might see some large numbers here and there, you might see something along the lines of the, uh, um, regular ed line that's 1103, 5321, and it looks like it's $140,000 not spent. But in reality is that pretty much when the purchase orders and things were done for the services, they were coded to 5322. So you'll see the line below it that looks like it's over budget by about $70,000. So those two are kind of, um, evening out and everything else, not really evening out, but, um, will wash each other. And then, um, under guidance, there's some areas with the 5341 account, um, in that respect, and there is about $20,860, um, still, uh, unspent funds under nursing staff. There's give or take about $16,000, but there, there's a couple of areas where the, the staffing, um, might show under budget. And then, of course, you've got some areas where, just due to circumstances, where they might be a little over budgets. We have, um, tire, which is the technology integration. Um, you'll see that the 5651 line is over, but then you're getting down to hardware in areas 5734, and you're going to be under $17,000. So you're, you're still swinging with small, um, variances. Auditing services. Oh, that's, that one's for the line of credit, that report there.
Teresa, did you say, I couldn't, I didn't see where I was able to call up the finances that you're, you're talking about.
You don't have those? Those were the first two reports that I'd sent tonight, today.
You want to resend them to me and I'll post them?
Sure. See if I can forward this back up. Okay, if you didn't get them.
Was that sent via email?
Yes.
When was that sent?
At 5:53.
Okay.
So not a big deal right this second, but I did not get that either.
Okay, should I be sending those reports like to multiple people, like to everybody? I've just been sending them to Chris and Lynn.
I found...
So weren't we getting those in our packet, Chris?
Yeah, I believe so. And so...
It's nice to be able to look at them and...
Yeah. You know, as a board member, I would really appreciate having a few days at least ahead of time to be able to review them, to see if I have questions or things like that.
What we'll do moving forward is that, um, I'll have Teresa send them to Nicole, and Nicole will send those out to the board prior to the meeting rather than currently. So, everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Teresa, just tell me what page you want me to scroll down.
Um, this time you can scroll down a little further. And keep going, it's probably down on, because where I was at at that point, I mean, if I can go back, oh, okay, so you've got the summary up there because there's always two versions. One is the summary version, which obviously, so it's just usually about six pages or so. In this case, a little shorter. Um, the other one is, if you bring up the other one, that's the more detailed.
Okay, hold on.
Teresa, while we're waiting for that, um, I know you said we have about 95% of the budget expended at this point, and what, we have a month? No, wait.
No, we're done.
We're done?
Yeah, there's...
Okay, are there still some things that might come in that relate? Like, are we on an accrual system?
We do, and, um, and the wage thing is something that, um, like wages that were accrued and stuff like that is one of the things that I noted on the, like, the line of credit thing. Because how this software handles, um, the accrued wages for the teachers that wanted to get payments over the summer versus the ones that took a lump sum, how that was handled, um, is a lot different than the way it used to be with the old system where, where the prior payroll person had to, I mean, literally process all the payments prior to the closing of that fiscal year. Then they kind of, and they were all done in checks and nobody got their direct deposit, even if they were a direct deposit originally. So they ended up kind of putting the checks in, I'll call it a lockbox, and then every two weeks, they'd mail those checks out. And so with the new system, we didn't need to do that. The system handled a special accrual, so we were able to accrue those wages forward. And each time we process payroll for the next, well, last, last period, in the next three pay periods, when we process payroll for the people that work calendar year, we'll actually process the payroll for those, um, teachers, like I said, that, uh, receive payments over the summer and everything else. And so our cash flow in that sense is only getting hit then. It doesn't look like it took a big hit right in June.
So do you anticipate that we will end within, you know, when all the accrual stuff goes through, will we end within budget?
I believe we will. At, at this point that I'm looking at, I, I believe that we will. Um, and we look like it, it, it could be, um, about $130,000, but again, there's some, there's some adjustments that I know that by the time I get done working with the auditors, there may be certain things that are adjusted that just, you know, you think they're supposed to post this way or occur this way, and they're like, well, we're going to treat it this way. So, and I, and I know that the expenditures, even though there's still, we still have, um, $176,000 worth of encumbered expenditures, only because I was getting ready, um, I was going to work this weekend and try and do the formal close for, um, what they call the soft close for the system, because once I close it, my ability to post to the accounting periods for FY20 go away, and I'm left with this period 13 that will not roll forward until I do a hard close, which is usually after your full audit's done. So we're kind of trying to force that, but there was, um, something with some people, um, something with the software where some people had already done that feature and they sent out a message and said, you know, if you'd already done this, now you're going to have to make this adjustment because we found this. So since I hadn't gotten that far anyhow, because I was trying to do a lot of cleanup first, um, I won't have to do that fix. But I was waiting for the new instructions, um, that I was hoping to get today because as, um, I talked to Superintendent Pratt earlier today, it puts people in a situation where right now the requisitions for the new fiscal year, they want to be creating a bunch, um, to get stuff, but I don't have that open yet because I was trying to make sure that this close and this roll forward goes correctly. So we don't put ourselves in a situation... where we're moving forward, you know, in the wrong direction again in another school year. So, but I may be forced to just do something different using journal entries and that just may be the, the way I have to go in order to get everybody to be able to start doing requisitions for the new fiscal year, because that's critical. But for the most part, the, I, I know I've mentioned a couple of times, but there's still loose ends, like I said, as far as like closing out, not necessarily closing out purchase orders, but paying them, because invoices that we just don't have yet. Um and everything else, and then um so we're working to get those. And workers' comp, I still have to post that in um substitutes, because I had to break that down from the SU level. But that's really, I mean, feeling pretty good about what is left to be done for Bellas Falls.
Thank you, Theresa, thank you.
So yeah, I, kinda going back to some of these line items, I think that um the only other thing that um, a couple of big things that you'll see is down, we've got that contingency down under this, um you'll find it like into the 2300 codes for school board area.
You know what page that's on?
I, oh, I should have wrote, I did not write my page number, I apologize. Um it's closer down to, almost. Well, it's probably want to steal, you're getting pretty close. Right there, right about there, so you'll see, is it one line up, one row up, might be one page up. Down, but we have the 90, yeah, right there on that page, page 19 of 26. You still have that $96,000, which is gonna kind of sit there, it's the same, here it's labeled special items, and I know that, I think in a couple of the other districts, it might say the word contingency. And I know that, again, that kind of sits there because it was built in there, the way it was explained to me, and I understand it to work, is that it was built in there to account for um when the CBA and things are ratified with any um, you know, contracts and things like that. Instead of going back and individually having to affect all the individual functions and codes, it's kind of put in there in one lump sum. And I think for the most part, I mean, the uh I don't, I don't see anything else that, to point out, that I can think of that really sticks out, that everything else is just kind of, you've got various accounts that are over, like I said, various accounts are under, I think on this page 22 that I brought up, you know, it's, it's one of those things that a lot of custodians were posted to the 5171 and should have been posted to 5181, and yes, I, if I get time, I'll go back and do a journal entry, because I really like going forward, comparison reports to be accurate. Just one row, one section up, where you'll see the accounts, but, but right now, it's one of those things that it doesn't change my bottom line and there's been more critical things to clean up, so I've kind of left, left that, we'll probably do it um in the end after, but just like I said, so going forward, when we're looking next year, 51 to 81 to 5181, I start getting comparisons that are actual good data comparison in this new software. Because right now we have, when it comes to wages and benefits, we don't really have that much to compare to for last year, because we were still using the old ADS program. Um I can't think of anything else at this one moment unless you guys have specific questions.
I can't see anybody, Chris, does anybody got a question?
I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay. Thank you, Theresa.
Sure.
I would like, I think we would like to see these reports, you know, we used to get them with our agenda and I think that's what everybody's kind of steering towards, I appreciate all the work.
Sure, and I, and I know for my sake, it's probably, I feel like I'm always running a day behind, so it's partly mine that I just feel like I I'm racing to get these to you guys and get everything else done, so, but I'll try to get them to you even sooner.
Thank you.
I will um have Theresa send them to Nicole and Nicole will get those out to you in an email, so you have them hopefully two days prior to the meeting.
Good, thank you. Uh there's no committees, right?
No, there is none.
WNESU Board Meeting Review, Mr. Clark.
Okay, let me unmute myself here, Molly. WNESU Board met last Wednesday, which was July 8th, and the uh business items were to move $71,000 from the Rockingham Food Account into the WNESU Food Account Bank. However, the WNESU Board did not act on that because Rock Board uh wanted to spend a little bit more time ensuring that those numbers were correct and the SU Board um supported them. Uh there, we did discuss a timetable for the release of the 2018, 2019 uh audit, that's right now, the year before last. Um I'm not entirely certain that we got a date certain, but we um did have the auditors in and they, it did indicate that uh they felt they were close to closure, and if there are any uh updates on that, if Theresa's aware of them, that would certainly appreciate it if you could.
Hello, send Theresa. I'm gonna.
All right. At this point, I haven't been told any specific dates myself, I know that we just got the Bellas Falls in um draft mode. And so we have to review those and the length of the reports, obviously, is gonna take a little bit of time to read through them. Um and I do believe I sent Chris a message, um because I don't think I got the attachment after all, so I don't have that report myself. So I will need that, but yeah, they haven't, they haven't been specific to me about any dates.
Well, well, thank you, Theresa. So that's a, that's an ongoing item, show up at the WNESU meeting when we meet on the 4th Wednesday, and we'll probably have uh more information. There was a request from Harley Sterling to uh provide an additional stipend for uh some of his critical food service workers. Uh his employees are not part of the collective bargaining agreement, so um that is an item that uh the Board felt needed further study. And also there was a report on the cost of food versus reimbursement for the government universal free meals during school closure program. Um we did get an overview from that uh from Harley, and I believe that that will also be an item uh that will get taken up in greater depth. I think, I think that Jason Terry may be working with Harley on this, Jason's quite a background in food service and I think is a huge uh resource for the Boards as well as the food service program. So I'm anticipating that when we get to our next SU meeting, that we'll be able to uh answer questions about food service and uh we will be able to consider Harley's request for the additional stipend with all of the information the Board would need to make an informed decision. Um we also discussed uh updates for uh school opening, that's one of the reasons that we decided to hold the special meeting. The other major reason was to find out where we were with regard to the 2018, 2019 audit. Um there was a resignation from Stanley Budzik as Transportation Coordinator, which I believe Chris is effective August 30th, is that right? Or 31st, and uh I believe that uh w- we will likely have Jennifer Rose as um uh Stanley's replacement. Uh she, for those of us who are regular attendees at the WNESU meetings, she did do a presentation for us. I want to say um almost a year ago uh in the late spring, and I thought that she was real heads-up um ballplayer. So I have, I have good feelings about that. Um that's your report, Molly, thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business for discussion, I don't believe we have any, do we, Chris?
I don't see any.
Okay. New business for discussion, approval for line of credit for cash flow purposes in the amount of $300,000. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Some move, Molly.
Thank you, David.
Um, do I have permission to speak?
Uh let's get a second on a motion, and yes, you will.
I'll second, Margot.
All right, Theresa, it's all yours.
Okay, and I, and I know that um I kind of ran into this with Union Elementary, and again, it may be um naive on my part. But, so working with the bank and everything else for the lines of credits, I've had to put together a big cash um cash flow sheet for them and everything else and show them the budget and the needs and everything else, and as I mentioned earlier, um how the payroll's being handed nowadays and stuff like that, um it, it does ease our cash flow a little bit le- a little bit more in a sense that it's not all kind of being treated going out the, act like it's going out the door, um one, but point being is that this little tiny chart that you see on screen, um my predecessor and to the best of my knowledge, this is the little chart that's been used forever. So based on the cash flow that we are tracking and beginning cash at the beginning of July, the payroll for July and August counts payables, because we have to make assessment payments to SU to keep it going, then the estimate that we need is just over a million dollars. So let's, talking to the bank again, as I mentioned that, um based on the circumstances that are going on this particular year, um any revenues that we kind of in the past have anticipated possibly over the summer, they're telling us to kind of push it back and assume that you probably won't get it, like tax payments from the towns and others, that it might could, you know, we usually don't get big tax payments till September anyhow, and we might get a really small amount. I think last year it was maybe about 100,000 that was in this anticipated summer revenue. So I did leave it out, which leaves us more around 400,000 as opposed to that original 300,000 mark. Um and you'll, you'll see that my little comment down below that there was $186,000 in payroll and benefits that was pushed forward from FY20 and the cash will go out the door in the four payrolls from July to August. So again, it kind of, it adds to that burden for the summer, but at the same time, it really doesn't change anything because it was cash flow that was going out anyhow over the summer, regardless of how it was treated. The second page. This particular chart is the one that the bank has me fill out. Again, I'm populating just what we had at the end of um June for the actual cash flow. And then I'm basically going through telling them everything that we anticipate in expenditures for July and August and all the way down through. And not um, not accounting for any re- revenues, receipts or anything for July and August as I stated, but then the anticipation of any state funds and stuff um going down to, carrying out to next June. So they mentioned that the working capital reserve in the past, nobody's ever usually done anything with their working capital. They just said, okay, this is what I need, the small chart that I showed you before. And that was the chart presented and that was the amount usually requested. And so you'll see it ties into the same 403 752. And as of this year, they're like, well, maybe what you need is that, you know, it's totally up to the school board to decide whether you want to put into the working capital reserve, which is basically um a 5% prior year approved budget, is, it's 5% of the prior year's approved budget at 365. And so they would be saying, okay, 768 is the potential that you might need based on the given circumstances and everything else, and it all still handles the same way, that if you need the funds and you draw, then you're gonna pay interest, but even if you got a line of credit, you didn't drop the funds down, you don't pay any interest on it whatsoever. So I just wanted to make sure that I presented both options, and I know that you, again, stated the 300, and, and again, that might be my naive on coming forward with the first number saying, you know, because that's the way, you know, as we've if I follow protocol that has occurred in prior years, then when I came to you and said, it looks like about 300, well, that's what would happen, and that's what we'd ask for, but it would keep us very, very tight, just the same, but it'll tweak us by. That's all I have.
Theresa, what would you like us to do?
Um I guess at this point, no matter what, I, I feel that the, the, the absolute minimum would be to follow the first chart, because that's the one that we've continuously always followed, no matter what. So even if at this point, the Board's not comfortable with saying, okay, we agree with what the suggestion is in open a line of credit for the 700, and we don't want to go that route, um even though, like I said, we don't, we don't draw it down, we don't pay any interest. Um but on the other hand, the, the absolute minimum to really get us through this is, is 400,000.
Okay. Is there a Board member comfortable in amending this motion to ask for 400,000?
Molly, I would be willing to withdraw the motion and remake it.
Okay.
Okay, um I would like to make a motion, Molly, to um uh request a line of credit for cash flow purposes in the amount of 403,752.
I'll resecond it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Theresa before we go to the vote?
Oh, one.
I can't see everybody, so if somebody's.
Hi, it's Jack Pryor.
Yes, go ahead, Jack.
Hi, uh you know, it doesn't cost you a dime more to ask for 400,000 as opposed to 300,000 as opposed to $700,000 if you can make a case for it. What costs you money is doing uh asking for lines of credit a second and a third time. I just want to make sure that Theresa doesn't feel that this number is artificially low. We don't know necessarily whether or not the state is going to be timely in its payments to us. We don't know necessarily whether or not there's going to be emergency issues around air handling or sanitation or half a dozen other things this year, and I'm just wondering if we're, if she's completely comfortable with asking frankly for the 400 and change, because it could easily be a higher number if things go south, and I'd hate to have to uh pay origination fees twice.
Jack, would you like to change the amount? Would you like to amend the motion?
Well, what I need to know from Theresa is, is it gonna cost her a whole lot of work to uh rejigger these uh receipts and expenses sheet, because if she thinks it's going to, I'm perfectly willing to live with what we're doing, but I, I really not as comfortable as I could be uh going lowballing our requirements if we shouldn't. And uh I don't have the answer to that. Theresa, what's your thoughts?
Um well, I, I guess I have kind of the same thoughts that you have, is that right at this point, no matter what we do, is that there's no extra extended cost or anything to playing it safe and taking the anticipated maximum amount allowed and going with that, and then um, and, and again, that's, that number might come final to the bank, they might say 700 is all we'll do in the end, but for the most part, um this is the anticipated grid that they're, they're using, and then um it, I, I'm gonna end up probably kind of like with Union Elementary, because the way that one was set, I mean, there's a possibility that I might have to go back to them if, if something happens, and just because circumstances, and originally, when I discussed, you know, even with hope at the bank about the fact that the state's saying, well, we might only give you 80% of what anticipated revenues are, to me, that's a huge concern, because that will definitely put us in a, in, in a situation, especially when each of the three districts are the ones feeding the supervisory union funds to pay salaries, which is a huge chunk of our district. And I, and I guess that's why some ways I, I feel like if it doesn't cost us. cost us anything more, there's no obligation to pull the funds, um I, then I lean to be in on the side of, you know, I don't know, you're on the side of caution?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we change this number to six hundred and fifty, say, uh if that were, I mean, you know, increase it by the two hundred thousand, if that would be, if you think that would be a showstopper or not, I just, I'm not comfortable trying to do it bare bones because we're, we're really putting ourselves at risk having to do this twice if we have to make some kind of emergency purchases. Uh that was kind of a question Teresa, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, that wasn't.
It was basically if we added two hundred thousand dollars to your authorization document.
And I think it puts us in a much better, more comfortable situation um that, that doesn't feel like we're gonna be scraping by sweating playing a shell game because been doing that for the last year and this shell game is really not that much fun.
It's not, it's not a good business practice generally, so that's why I'm asking. Uh I would ask the maker of the motion and the second to add two hundred thousand dollars to their uh to their uh motions if they wouldn't mind and I'll step back.
I'll take David and then Priscilla.
Alright, um what the, what Chris, what um Teresa has recommended to us is four hundred three thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars, what the bank has recommended is in addition to that, that we take five percent of our previous years approved budget as working capital, that brings the total up just over seven hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Obviously, that's a number that the bank is comfortable with because they're suggesting it and I would say that I think Jack is correct in his assessment that we may in fact be in for some rough sledding in terms of anticipated uh state payments, so therefore, I would suggest, Jack, we might actually consider um uh the seven hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars that the bank has been promoting and in that regard um with uh Margot's uh ascent, I would like to withdraw my motion and if you would like to remake it, I think that'd be great.
Best cremation now?
Yes, please.
Uh then what was that total number again, uh David with the, with the big bank's recommendation?
The round number, Jack, is seven hundred uh sixty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars, thanks Chris.
That's rounded up?
Well, I, 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 you don't have to make up the paperwork that high, but I think that uh we don't generally have as part of our uh, I, I, I think they would be wise to do that, I, I think this, that uh I would, I would move then that we uh authorize the uh the uh finance office to seek a line of credit not to exceed seven hundred and what was that again?
Sixty-eight eight forty-six.
There you go, uh thank you.
Okay, I have the motion, Margot, are you seconding it?
I'll second it again.
Thank you.
Alright, Priscilla, you're next.
Um, is there a cost for these, this, and does it change with the amount that we have or is it simply, sometimes there's a cost of origination fee with a line of credit in that, or is this just something that they grant us as a nonprofit type business?
Yeah, there, there's no origination fees or anything that we're paying, um and the interest rate that's been offered with like Union is one point eight five percent.
But that's only if we take any of the money and, and get it.
Absolutely, we'll only pay that interest rate if we draw down and, and like last year, um when we did that, I just, I, I waited as long as I could to the last minute to draw anything down because every single day counted.
Thank you Teresa.
Thank you. Any other questions, are we ready for the vote? Mr. Fine.
First of all, I think we ought to take a look at the fact that the agenda talks about.
I lost.
A loan credit of three hundred thousand dollars and I'm not sure that it's appropriate to just pick a number that's beyond that because the whole point of an agenda is to tell the world, hey, this is something we're gonna consider and there may be, I don't know, there may be folks out there who would say, hey, seven hundred thousand is something that I would oppose, three hundred thousand is something that I might consider reasonable. So I don't think we can just sit here and say, well, the agenda says three hundred thousand, but maybe we should do four, five, or six, or seven, or eight, or a million, it doesn't much matter, once you go over the three hundred thousand, you're off the agenda and you're probably in violation of some goddamn law somewhere like the open meeting law, the agenda law, whatever the hell it is. That's one point that I think is fairly critical here, but I have some other questions, I don't re-.
I can't hear you, you're all clapping.
Huh?
I can't hear you, your, your sound went crazy.
Okay, I'm going crazy here. I don't recall us borrowing money without knowing how much it's gonna cost us, okay? And, and I'm concerned about that and just having somebody appear at the meeting saying, well, it's only X percent, doesn't quite fit the requirement that we ought to have something pretty firm from a bank before we jump on this thing. Um, the other question I have, and I guess it was answered, I hope it was answered, is whether there's a standby fee on this stuff because if there is, then we ought to be looking for a bank that doesn't require a standby fee for folks like us and then I have a concern, folks like us being school boards, and then I have a concern about who's gonna make the determination as to what amount gets taken out of this and when, I don't want us to be in the position where somebody is looking at this and saying, hey, there's seven hundred thousand dollars here, so what the hell, let's just take a couple of bucks out of it because it's convenient, even if it may not be essential, so those are my concerns.
Deb?
Yep, um I, I agree uh many, most of this of what uh Mr. Fine has already said, I see a number of three sixty-five and ninety-four with a, with a five, a modest five percent increase, uh I don't agree with doubling that number as has been, that's why I apologize for missing the beginning half of this, but I'm catching up pretty quick on expenses and this is based on last year's expenses and the reality is, we've had a lot of significant reductions, in this particular July and August and September, I don't believe we need more than the, say, for instance, the suggested three sixty-five, not the bank's suggested seven sixty-eight, so I do not agree with that doubled number, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I do Molly.
Go ahead David.
Alright, um I think that both Steve Fine and uh Deb's comments are certainly germane to the orderly and efficient uh operation of at least our school board, um I am also at the same time concerned that we may be looking at uh very substantial uh cash flow issues and my, I am prepared to support the motion because I think it's worthwhile to lock the credit down now while it's on offer, I, having said that, um I do hear the concerns that uh Steve and Deb have just expressed and it is my belief that we could in fact borrow three hundred thousand dollars and then come back to the trough at our next meeting if necessary or a special meeting if necessary because as has been pointed out by Teresa, um there is no origination fee, so it would not at least uh under today's terms and conditions cost us any uh additional money to come back later, um of course, uh one thing we know about the current uh economic situation, this is an awful lot we don't know and, and that's why I'm willing to uh support the uh, the opening of a large line of credit, I do think the business office is extremely responsible in terms of uh when they exercise their discretion to borrow that money and uh bluntly, I think that it is in the best interest of the districts to have that line, we don't do it tonight, I hope we would seriously consider it our, at our next meeting.
So we have a motion right now on the floor to approve a line of credit for cash flow purposes in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, it is an amount that the bank has approved, am I understanding that correctly? Teresa?
Sorry, can, I apologize, can you say that again?
We have an emotion on the floor right now to approve for a line of credit for cash flow purposes in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, the bank has approved that amount for us, is that correct?
Yes.
We only are going to use it if we need it, we know right now that we do not need all of that money, but we also know that, who knows, Chris may come and tell us that he got a real deal on more masks and everything else and he needs a little more money, I don't know, I mean, that's not our, our real, when I'm listening to all this, what I'm thinking about is David Clark, Jack Brier have been very um open with what is going to happen, David especially with like, are you gonna get your tax money, you're gonna get your money from the state, does the state have any money, you know, we know that we're gonna get some money this fall, but what are we gonna get? So I, I don't, I, I don't disagree with Stephen Fine or anybody else on, I get it, I don't, I never borrow any money unless I absolutely have to, but my understanding is this is a line of credit that we only are going to use if we have to use it, so I just don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot and then have something come up that we have to have to get the school opened up and not have the funds to do it. So if anybody's gonna need to help me out on that, then go ahead, I can't see anybody so.
Uh, Madam Chairman?
Madam?
Priscilla's got her.
Yes.
I have mine.
Go ahead Priscilla.
I guess, I'm not helping you out Molly, but what I'm asking is, what control do we, does the board have over the use of that then, because we don't want it used just to, because we've got it, we want it only as a contingency for um things that absolutely have to be used this year because we are in this year of big concern over what we're going to get from the state and all of that and federal funds.
So that is, thank you Chris.
Oh, Chris has got a.
Is it this Chris?
Yes.
Okay, so here's some things that you should know, um if this money is needed for things that were budgeted, in other words, as a result of a shortfall in revenue for taxes or whatever the revenue might be, um you've already exercised the level of control over that to some degree, um if it's gonna be used for a big ticket item, something that has to go out to bid, uh that the board, you know, the board ends up with some built-in controls over that, um so I'm not here to say that I've got kind of a, a comprehensive analysis of the answer to that question, but there are some built-in inherent um things that, um I mean, I suppose if we were prone to do this, we could nickel and dime our way through all of this with um, you know, going over budget on lines for a permissible amount over many lines that then taps deeply into that seven hundred thousand, but um, but there are already some built-in um controls, you know, and, and I, and I really do see this money as, yikes, we aren't getting the revenue we were supposed to get and yet there are some budgeted things that we need to spend money on and, and it's, it's a safety net.
Go ahead Jack.
Yeah, I was just going through my digital uh Robert's rules because, you know, Steve Fine makes a point here that I think's worth considering and there is uh generally, you don't put dollar amounts into uh agenda items specifically because of this kind of thing, however, uh the, what I'm looking at says that people routinely change those dollar amounts as part of the agenda uh options and I think that we can do so properly here. Uh, there's a second point, which is the one that Priscilla's bringing up, which is, will we be responsible spenders, Chris Hudson and I have bumped heads a hundred times over the years, but the one thing we'll never bump heads over is the fact that he is a incredibly responsible steward of our fiscal resources, but the last person I can think of that would go out and say, oh, it's time to go buy two or three more school buses is Chris Hudson and I think that uh I'm feeling very comfortable that if we get into this situation, both that will have a robust discussion about it because it will probably be a crisis and do, we should uh do it now, it's worth noting that one of the reasons banks are eager to lend is because the Federal Reserve is eager to have them lend, uh there is money available to them right now that will not be available to them necessarily three, six, nine months from now when uh the whatever hits the fan, I think that it's proper for us to do this now and not find that we need the money, have to call on it and find that we're paying eight percent uh or some other number if uh if fiscal situations country goes completely out of whack.
So Jack took the words right out of my mouth and added a hundred thousand more words, but, I mean, we're, we're talking about our principal of our high school who holds one of the tightest budgets and and he, we never have to question what's going on, he, so we have the money in the account, but the only reason we're gonna use that money is if we really need to use that money, I, I'm not nervous about having that money sitting there, it's not, he's not gonna start writing purchase orders for, you know, whatever we all think is foolish, that's not how he handles the money, so um we have a motion on the floor right now and if someone doesn't have something, another question, I'd like to act upon it, um there's nothing in the chat. There's a motion on the floor to approve a line of credit for cash flow purposes in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, eight, eight hundred and forty, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Are you ready? Okay, I'm gonna call your name, Deborah.
No.
Jack Brier.
Yes.
Thank you, Margot?
Yes.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Yes.
Colin James, you still with us?
I see him.
No, we lost Colin. Uh David Clark?
Yes.
Stephen Fine?
No.
We have one, two, three, four yes and two no, motion passes. So next thing we have is Chris Hudson, I'd like you to just. I'd like you to just speak on VPA Sports Update. I don't, not looking, I just want you to tell me what you know.
All right. So, right now, as far as fall sports are concerned, the VPA has not reached a final decision on much at all. We have a strong sense that soccer, field hockey, and cross-country will happen because there have been lots of conversations about how that's gonna happen. They have kind of officially taken a, we haven't decided yet, position on football. I did check in prior to this meeting as to what he knows. The most recent information from the VPA. So they will not be making a decision for a few weeks. They have created a task force. And this is an email that was forwarded from Ian, by Ian to me from Bob Johnson, who's the head of the VPA, that a task, as of Tuesday of last week, they, the VPA, were notified by the governor's office that they were setting a task force for the reopening of Fall 2020 Sports. And the VPA will be part of that. But I think that's the, we'll find out in a couple of weeks. In the meanwhile, what they have said is, we will not have the traditional preseason of sports. So when sports start for the fall, the first day of practice will be the first day of school. That then would impact, if they stick with their regular old rules, there's this expectation of 10 practices before the first game. We don't know if they'll cut some of that short or not, but if it is 10 practices before the first game, that will cut into some of the games for the seasons. So we've been talking about how do we manage that? There is not an expectation that you make up all of those because the season will still end at the same time. So we're trying to find the best way to tweak schedules, knowing that right now, the plan is, first practice is the first day of school. What I will say in a very general sense is, we fully plan to run all of the sports that the VPA will allow us to run. And we will do that following all of the restrictions that will be put in place. And I'm gonna tell you, even for something as inherently social distancing as cross-country, I'm sure there will be some adjustments and some limitations there. We'll see the same thing for soccer, or for field hockey, and for football. All I can say right now is, right now, there has been lots of conversation about soccer, field hockey, and cross-country continuing. And we are in a wait-and-see about football. But I want to emphasize, if folks have questions or concerns about the decision-making on that, it's the VPA and the AOE that folks should reach out to. As I said, if we're told that we can do soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and football, we will do all of those. If we're told we can only do some of those, we will only do some of those. And there is really no capacity to go rogue on any of those because once the seasons are canceled, there'd be nobody to play if we wanted to go rogue on any of those things. So that's the quick and dirty on fall sports.
Thank you, Chris. In my rush, maybe, to get through this agenda, I didn't actually announce that that last motion was approved. I can smell the grill going in my background, so. Appointment, science teacher, Patricia Murray.
You got it. So she is the individual that we would like to bring forward to replace Sue Steiner. And there is no replacing Sue Steiner, but there is filling the opening. Sue Steiner was a fantastic teacher. Patricia Murray, though, has lots of experience. She was for, I believe, 22 years a science teacher at Woodstock. Actually, for 24 years. She was a science teacher at Woodstock. Departed the field for a little while. And then came back into education for the past couple of years as a full-year, long-term sub at Hartford High School for two years in a row. And comes highly regarded and highly recommended by the administration there. So again, longtime teacher at Woodstock. I don't know if I mentioned this, but for many years, she was the department head for the Science Department at Woodstock. And I think the last important selling point was, she, like all of our teachers, was able to apply those many years of experience to remote learning this past spring. And came up with a lot of good strategies to engage students. But I think maybe as important as anything else, when I was talking to the principal at Hartford, she was as committed and as engaged as any of their ongoing returning teachers. In other words, that was a very difficult three months of figuring out teaching and engaging students. And he was as impressed with her work there as he was any of his other teachers, the way she stepped up to the plate. Again, Professor Murray for our vacated science position.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the science teacher, Patricia Murray? Jack Breyer?
I'll happily make that. I know the person in question.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Maybe we have to rethink this then, Jack. You didn't tell me that.
It's mostly my reputation.
Okay.
All right, has a motion been made and seconded to approve the appointment of the science teacher, Patricia Murray? Is there any questions? Or can we move the, Mr. Pratt?
Yes, Chris, I'm just curious. You said that Patricia Murray took to online learning like the proverbial duck to water. Does she either have, or is she working on the online learning certificate? I realize that requirement has been suspended by AOE. Nonetheless, it's helpful to BFUHS if she either has or is able to obtain it.
That never came up, Jack. So, I mean, David, I'm not sure, so.
Not influenced my vote.
Any other questions for Chris? All those in favor?
Molly, I have a question. What level is she being hired at?
I am recommending Master's Step 18. But I will also say, not having checked it, I know Sue Steiner has been here for a while and is well-educated, so I think it's gonna be a similar cost.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for the question. Deborah?
Aye.
Jack Breyer?
Don't hold it against her. Aye.
Margot?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
David Clark?
Aye.
Stephen Fine?
Yes.
Motion passes. There is no executive session that I'm aware of. Mr. Pratt, nothing?
I do not have anything.
All right, let's go back down that vote pile. Director's comments. Deb?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Jack Breyer?
Just want people to know that don't know that Act 46 went against the schools of Westminster, Athens, and Grafton. That doesn't mean the fight is over, but it does mean this chapter is over. And you'll probably hear more about that in future days.
Thank you. Margot?
I'm all set for now, thank you.
Priscilla?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on something that was on the news yesterday. On the NBC Nightly News, there were five pediatricians who are also parents from Tennessee, New York, Jersey, New York, California, and Vermont. So those are some of the high COVID areas as well. And they stated unequivocally that they would send their children to school. The benefits outweigh any risks that could possibly be there. They also discussed the masks, and at a high school level, they probably were really profitable to be used, but were somewhat questioning on the younger ones. And yet they said the younger the children get, the responses they have been having throughout the world. And there are some European studies that show that they've been in school and the risk has been at about 2% of cases as far as children. And they really do not spread the virus like adults do. And the spreading has come from the adults to the children. So I thought that was a really positive thing when we're looking at opening schools to be thinking about.
Thank you. Do we have Colin James back? Doesn't look like I do. Okay, so I'm down to David Clark.
Thanks, Molly. All I really want to say tonight is I'm glad to be here, working with a great board and a great administration. And I'm hoping you can get your great teachers back in the classroom, Chris.
Thank you.
Stephen Fine? Do we have him? I think he's gone to have supper. Okay, I would just like to say, I'd like to thank everyone who is involved in this task force. That, this is, that's a job, that's a group of people that they're gonna have to work so hard to do all the right things. And we know they're gonna do all the right things. But there's so many rules and things that everyone involved in the education process, whether you're the bus driver, or the custodian, or the principal. You, there's, there's so much gonna be involved in opening up our schools. And I am tickled that we're heading in that direction. And I just, I wanna thank everybody. I would love to have been on that, but there's no way I could have done meetings in the middle of the day. So, good job for everybody that's doing it. Agenda items for next board meeting. Like to have those sent to Chris Pratt and myself. If you have something you want on the high school agenda, please communicate with us. And we will, we will make that happen. The next board meeting is, cannot be July 10th. The next board meeting should be July 27th, I believe. And that is only if we need one. A lot of times, we don't need one in the middle of the summer. But with all this going on, we may need a board meeting. So that's our next board meeting if we need it. I'd like a motion to adjourn. Mr. Pratt? All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. We've done it.